Thumbs up for us. All right. Are you ready? Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we go open the continuing meeting from the February twenty first Board of Supervisors meeting. This is a workshop. Our agenda is to work on the proposed budgets. Gentlemen, you've got three proposed budgets. Available to you that were prepared by staff. And you got any questions before we give Josh to run us through them? All right, Josh?
Okay. So I've prepared three different templates for you guys. One, two of them are based on level funding as far as expenditures go wherever possible. One is based on a one percent colon and one is based on a three and a half percent colon. The last is based on the department request that I received. So in other words, they're dollar for dollar what departments have requested or agencies have requested with a three and a half percent colon.
Does that mean the first two did not have the department request in it all at all? It's just the colas.
Yeah, same as current budget.
That's what I understood. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Um. So if you want, we can go through the one percent real quick. Like I said, wherever possible, we left expenditures where they are currently funded and we added a one percent. One percent colon. After realigning some revenues and we did include a ten percent real estate rate adjustment, which is four cents. Goes from thirty eight to forty two. We are looking at a general fund deficit of seven hundred and sixty two thousand. Bear with me one second please. Just want to make sure I got the right thing. Yeah, seven hundred and sixty two thousand, six hundred and forty one dollars. Any questions so far?
Is that before or after the full cent?
That's after.
How was the revenue? Sorry. How was the revenue coming in this year? What, what did that, was there? You mentioned earlier, there was some difference in the personal property.
Yeah, so we're falling a little short on where we've projected. Twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four both saw year or. Let me start up. Twenty twenty three saw a actual number that came in less than what we projected. And I'm looking the same for twenty twenty four. So realigning along with that actual activity. I've actually reduced personal property, but I've been a little more conservative with it this year than in previous. Just because our actuals are not coming in where we projected them. And that could, it's based on a number of different things. One thing to mention is we have outstanding accounts in personal property of over a million dollars. Last time I checked. So that's a million dollars of AR we have not received yet. And it's based on various things. It's over multiple different years. It could be that people fell on hard times and pay a bill late, whatever. But the actuals in the current year are not meeting the level of funding that we expected. And we do have a million dollars of outstanding personal property accounts.
Why is that?
Yeah, it's a good question. I mean, it's over multiple different years. It could be economic effect. Could be a number of different things. We don't know. It's just bills that haven't been paid. So.
Could we have, go ahead Dexter.
So you're saying it could be economic effect on this? So by raising the real estate tax. Up, we just compounded the problem for these folks that if they end that position.
If they're into that position.
Yes.
Yeah.
By raising it. Okay.
But we don't know what the breakdown is between personal property and real estate too. It could be that the.
Outstanding accounts.
Right.
No, we actually do. It's.
Well, I mean, but you haven't, you haven't told us that in that amount, right? But the, you said it was.
In this book? No, that's not reflected. No, we're recognizing delinquent accounts as a revenue line item.
Yeah.
But it's based on activity. So it's, we're not going to bring in a million dollars of delinquent accounts in one year.
Right, exactly, exactly. Yeah. Do we have, did we, in one of our future budget workshops, can we get Stephanie to come in and talk about that? Because we tend to have one of the best. Rates of election in the state. So I, I think we need to make sure we, you know, an amount doesn't get us scared by something. When you look at what the historical trends have been, et cetera, and get some, some opinion from her as well.
Yeah.
From that, not that you're doing that, Josh, but I just think that's her job. That would be good to have her come talk about it too.
Absolutely.
I didn't, I didn't, I knew we run a little deficit in it, but I didn't know we were that much.
Well, that doesn't necessarily equate to a deficit. It's just, we haven't collected that amount of money yet.
Okay.
So actuals are, are lower than what we expected this time of the year. Not necessarily a deficit, yeah.
Okay. We definitely need to talk to Stephanie. See what, if there's a trend that they can see to let us know that, hey, maybe this money's coming in later on. I mean, I know all of it ain't, but. We don't want to contribute to the problem saying, well, we got to raise taxes up this much.
Agreed.
Because these people already not paying and it just puts more burden on everybody.
Yeah, so in that you can, you all guys can kind of actually kind of see that number. So in the monthly financial reports that are sent in, that are included in the board book. If you look at the real estate in the personal property section. And I, I hate to throw out numbers. I don't want you to quote me on. But I believe Stephanie carries twenty years of real estate and five years of personal property. I believe that's. The amount that we carry. Um. So there is, there are different accounts set up underneath. The personal property and the real estate on those financial reports that show you what's delinquent tax that's been brought in. And what's current taxes have been brought in. Current taxes are paid on time. Delinquent are from past years or after the due dates. So y'all can kind of see that on your financial reports month to month.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree Dexter. That'd be helpful to have her talk, talk it through since she does it all day, every day.
Absolutely.
Get it straight from the expert.
Yep.
All right, you keep it on.
Okay. So section one kind of gives you a very broad overview between the different major funds. So you have Fund one hundred being the general fund. Fund three oh four being the capital improvement fund. Five oh two sanitary district. Special revenue funds, they're not broken up by fund number, but they're consolidated there in the top right corner. School operating be two five one, school textbook two five four and school cafeteria fund two five nine. So that's very broad overview, revenue versus expenditures and what the difference is on that page. This, now disclaimer, the CIP is not accurate in this report because I did not have some of data available to me. So what I did, the CIP is based off of the requested and the. Ones that I know are going to roll forward. I need to confirm roll forward or carry forward amounts and Brady's working on that for me. So I give you an updated number when I get that, but this is based more on the requested CIP projects versus. The rollover and the requested. So just a disclaimer there.
That'd be, that'd be good to know. We need to get a handle on the CIP.
Okay, um. Let's see it. Special revenue fund balance of minus twenty, two fifty. Is that already included in the general fund balance or that's added to that general fund?
So the special revenue fund brings in pretty standard set amount of money every year. Cause it's, it's more basically like interest that we make off of savings accounts that we have.
Okay.
Very broadly stated. So the expenses, you'll notice that there are two expenses there that are listed. The one hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure for proffers is the next. Down payment that we have planned for the ambulance. The ambulance is not being paid for in full. We're paying for that in installments because of the length of time it takes to build it. I don't recall the exact year that we're expected to see that in, but it's not in the next year. So we're, that's one installment. Our, our second installment that will be recognized in FY twenty five. So that's an expenditure. And the twenty six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars is offsetting the EDA's budget that's under the general fund. So that washes out. Those expenditures exceed the amount of money that we expect to bring in from those accounts. That's why you're seeing a deficit there.
Okay.
Okay. And obviously we're seeing a deficit in the general fund and CIP. Okay, section two kind of gives you a more detailed breakdown, still kind of like a summary, but it's more detailed for you guys to see. And y'all can see in the top section, this is where most of your general fund revenue is going to be situated at. It's broken between local revenue and state revenue. And um. We're projecting an increase in both. But I've, like I said, I've been extremely conservative with the personal property tax projection.
Okay, the real property revenue for twenty twenty five is thirteen million?
Thirteen point eight.
That's increased five hundred thousand from last year.
Correct.
And the next line, other local taxes, I'm assuming that's personal property?
No, real property includes real estate and personal property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So what's the other local taxes?
Other local taxes would be like our.
Business license.
By business license, vehicle license, I think is part of that. I can look in the detail.
Okay, so that answers most of it.
Yeah.
Next one says fees and licenses.
Yeah, why did that drop? The fines and forfeitures.
I don't think we ever project, if I remember, I don't think we ever projected as high as it's going to be, right?
No, it's, yeah, the other revenue usually comes in above what we project. So if I can get my computer to come up here, it was on.
No, but it is different than the request too.
Let me look into the detail for you guys.
See that too. I was. That's all the difference only between.
Fifty thousand dollars difference.
That is the only difference between the actuals.
See if I can, it might be easier. Yeah, so if we want to go to section four real quick. On page eleven. Most of that number is, um. Yes, so it's, if you look at the top section of page eleven. Under the fiscal year actuals. Our projected figure for FY twenty four for fines and forfeitures, which is about the seventh or sixth line from the bottom. Of that first box. We're projecting it lower based on activity. So you can kind of see these years preceding that twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty two.
So twenty three was just extremely high?
Yeah, I can look into the detail of that. I'm not sure what would cause that number to jump that high, but the years previous to that were far lower. So that may be a special circumstance, like there was at one time thing that caused that number to increase. But based on the actual expenditures over that course of time, we're projecting it to be seventy three thousand five.
Which is still higher than the trend.
Right.
Little less than back in twenty nineteen, but higher than probably the, the trend in general. Yeah, that's weird. We're so weird.
Yeah, there's got to be something causing that to be as high as it is and that the comparison is probably skewed at that point. So the actual is twenty three versus, or the actuals in twenty. Four. Are skewed, so we can, we can look into that. I can get you more information on that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions I can touch on real quick?
Keep on, you want to keep on just bumping down, finishing up section two, then we'll move on.
Okay. All right, and then going down the line, you can see the different funds as well, the different activities in the funds. So. And I apologize, it looks like one number got left off for one oh eight for Fund one oh eight. There should be a revenue there. Cause that's going to be based off of interest. And for some reason did not get included, so my apologies for that, but that's the proffers fund.
Yeah, I noticed we had a separate sheet on the, at laid out here for proffers.
Yeah, so upon request, this information has been put together for you guys. That sheet summarizes the available fund balance as of two twenty nine. For the cash proffers fund, which is Fund one oh eight. And the five dollar decal road fee on one ten.
Oh, I was going to ask you what one ten correlated, okay.
Man, again, my apologies, the title got left off of that.
Oh, that's all right. It's an easy question.
So right now, the beginning fund balance for cash proffers, we started the year with nine hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty two cents. Of fund balance in that fund, one oh eight. We brought in to date seventy one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars of revenue. In our conferences, some money that we have allocated against those assets. So that'd be the ambulance and the two police cars, which we have not expensed a hundred percent yet. That number is five hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. You take that number out, your available fund balance for use is four hundred and two thousand, two hundred and ninety six dollars and forty eight cents. That's available money from cash brokers.
How much is this ambulance?
I believe the ambulance is half a million dollars.
About three something.
There's right at three, half threes, right at the.
Oh, I might be, I might be wrong on that.
And then. That money and this other hundred and fifty covers ambulance then.
Close. No, so the one fifty is part of that five hundred or whatever amount of money that we have set aside for the ambulance. The one fifty is part of that. That's the whole figure right there.
And you said included some police cars and other things too.
Yeah, but that was eighty six thousand dollars for these cars. So. I think it was their equipment also.
Yeah, outfitting and all that. Right, yeah, they're pretty, pretty big numbers.
So where, where did the seventy one thousand come from? Are we still, I reckon we got some profits coming in from some past.
Yeah.
Places that had profit.
Yeah.
Do we expect any? Do we expect that number to grow?
That I don't.
I mean, I don't know how much profit.
Well, that, that report Jeff did last year showed that we continue to grow. We just can't project when the, when they'll take advantage of those lots. So it's hard to. It's hard to ever forecast for it, but that it would continue to grow. Well, you can't really say would, because they might choose not to develop it at all. They say it could. Let's say theoretically it can grow. So I think you probably never should. Forecast revenue in that, but then once you actually get the revenue. You just consider it available to spend, obviously. Well, I don't see any point in sitting on the four oh two. I mean, what's, there's no value in it just sitting in the bank. If we can find existing things in this year's.
But I think we're going to use it for.
Well, well, that's what I was going to say, existing things that it can, right, I mean, because it's, they only got limitations. But if there are existing things that we can use the four oh two against. Then. I don't see any reason not to. Cause there's even some. Based on that, I'll work back out, but even some of the school projects and things potentially, you'd have to look at the individual project. Even some of those could potentially count. Some of the CIP projects could, could count. But I mean, anything that we could use the four oh two for would, would come, would help close that. Seven hundred and some thousand dollar gap. I mean, that would be tremendous there.
Yeah, we fall into the general fund, it will offset that number.
Yep. Yeah, but, but again, I know you can only use it for certain, you know, things, obviously, but I, I have a feeling with. It's still a wide enough latitude on what you can use the proffers for considering. You started at the beginning of the budget cycle and you look at everything that's available in that.
And the, the second account.
Yeah.
Is it a one? And. We generally use that money for six year plans. And I think we're going to possibly look at some of that money for the sidewalk project, because it's. Got to be highway. Relevant to roads, so.
Is that the only fund that goes to the, towards the six year plan or is there another?
There would be other monies. You can put general fund on them.
No, I know, I know, I'm sorry, but yes, I know you can't put it, can put anything. I was thinking there was another fund that kind of generally. Targeted that too. I, I'm, I'm not coming up with some specific, I, I'm just. My memory is falling. I was just trying to come up with that, what it was.
It's only what I know of it, because five dollars from these decal goes into it.
Yeah.
I don't remember any of them.
Maybe I'm just thinking generally, but so we've got the, the E nine one one and some other. Funds we're using towards some of the radio costs as well, right?
Getting ready to send you the cash property for the balance.
Okay.
It'll be on top of everybody's email.
For the next one, can we look at the? I'm going to call it E nine on one, but I just mean broadly, any of those telecommunications. Funds that we get. Look, that we have local funds from. Some, similar to the way you just did these, these two.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, this is really helpful, Josh. I mean, I think looking at. So this is a much higher. Fund in the, the decal one than I remembered it. Being.
We've only dipped into a couple times more. The last that I remember was the subdivision up there off South May Avenue. We had to fix a road in there. All right.
Okay. Any other questions before we head on? Okay, and so then the rest of on page four for section two. We're getting towards, by the way, if you get past this, the special revenue funds that we're, we have there, you get into the school operating budget. So that's two five one. So these are projections here. For state, federal and the local money that are projected. After that would be textbook cafeteria. Capital improvement plan again, well, the revenue is, we're projecting is accurate here for the, the capital improvement plan. We are projecting the same amount of revenue that we projected. Last year in terms of host fees. Our trend looks like it's going to stay level and that's our hopes. So that's what we're baking it on, which is two and a half million dollars of host fees. So that's revenue going into the CIP.
By way of the general fund to the CIP.
No, that's, that's purely host fees. So that's waste management.
But yeah, but it goes through the general fund. And then if we reach our. Thirty percent, then it goes into a capital fund account.
Right, so if our, if I'm understanding you right, if our reserve account, our undesigned reserve balance exceeds thirty percent. We do a transfer from general fund into the CIP. That hasn't happened in twenty three and I don't expect it to happen in twenty four, but that is the policy yet. We exceed thirty percent of expenditures, budget expenditures. The difference gets transferred.
That's in addition to a two and a half million.
Right.
That's in addition, the two and a half million, just the host fees, it just goes straight from waste management, straight into CIP, straight into CIP. Then what you're saying is in addition to that.
Yep. The last year that's.
All right, that hasn't been explained that way. I was under the impression, and I thought I was told this, that when we get, when the checks come in from landfill. They go to the general fund. And then when we reach that thirty percent. Anything over that it goes. So, so you tell me we're, we're actually putting money from the landfill to the CIP.
Yes, so the, the, what you're referring to is not the general fund itself, but the same bank account. That the general fund uses.
Okay.
So the difference between the general ledger and the bank account.
The bank account doesn't really matter at the end of the day.
It doesn't matter. That's cash versus act, so. But so just for everybody's awareness, I'm going to use FY twenty two. FY twenty two, we did exceed thirty percent of budgeted expenditures. I believe the number was about one point one million dollars. Carla, when she was here. Transferred one point one million dollars of fund balance from the general fund into the CIP. And that was on top of three million dollars of host fees. So that particular year was about four point five million dollars of revenue for the CIP.
Okay. And I think if you're looking at this one, I mean, that's, you've got a similar. Here, right, is, it's, you had three, so the FY twenty twenty three actuals. Am I reading that one right? So your actual charges, so that's host fees came in at a little more than three million.
Yeah, yeah.
Is eighty, and the eighty nine is eighty nine thousand, four ninety eight?
Yeah, so that, that particular transfer there is use of ARPA money. So right now, we have an ARPA account balancing one hundred.
But it would look the same, it would, it was the same, yeah.
Exactly the same.
Yeah. You just haven't seen it, you haven't seen it yet happen because we haven't finished the year.
Fallen in below yet.
Right.
So we need to kind of build that account or a reserve balance back up to be able to do that, but.
Right.
You would see that exactly like that laid out.
As we, as we talked at the, at the last board meeting, we were kind of going to do CIP with the same. Same amount of effort that we're working on this budget with. So, and that'd probably be another workshop. Can, can we get all those numbers on what goes into the CIP and, and get it nailed down? To what we have there, what we were counted for. I'd like to see a little bit of attention put on that, make sure we don't exceed what we have there.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly put that together. Once I get some more concrete data, I can definitely get that for you.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. And then. See Economic Development Authority, that's money that they bring in for use of property, use of money, rent and interest payments. So that you can kind of see their revenue there. And then you have the sanitary dish, which is Fund five oh two, that's water and sewer revenue. Charges for services, fund transfers. We do do a substantial transfer. From the general fund into the sanitary dish to balance it out.
Is that the four seven B A?
It is, yep.
Well. On the five oh one, why are we? The money is flopping. I mean, we go from the revenue use of money. From fifty last year to three thousand this year. And then the use of property from twenty last year to a hundred and twenty nine this year.
And then the use of property from twenty last year to a hundred and twenty nine this year.
Let me look into that because that could be. The spreadsheet's picking up a number that it shouldn't. I can get back to you guys on that one. But you're right, that's a substantial change between the two, so and I can't explain that right now. Okay, but I will certainly uh get you a detailed breakdown of what's causing that and sit it to you.
For five oh two. So tip to. We we, I think we all do know what you're talking, what you're talking about. The county subsidize, but we've been trying to keep the subsidy stable or improving. So we've been raising the the rates to keep that consistent. Has there been a rate change proposed or factored in? Guessing not factored in yet.
When a rate change has not been factored in, it has not been recommended. I can double check with Darryl. We did adjust rates in um the current budget FY twenty four.
We did not ask for none of them.
I'd like to follow me and I'd like to understand rationale for whatnot that I disagree. I don't have an opinion on it at this point, but I'd like to understand. We have been keeping it. The last couple of years, we've been increasing it. Again, to keep up with our, we've been increasing the same amount as our costs have been increasing. Our costs are going up. The idea was not to continue to pass along increased costs to the average citizens, you know. For what fewer get the benefits from. We just underst- can y'all come back and present what the rationale for that? Again, I'm not judging it at this point. I don't have enough information to make a decision. But help us understand why that's not. Why that's a good decision. To not increase it this year. And then um. While I'm on that one, I know we've looked at just these across the board the last couple of years. To see what needs, if anything, to be changed. Those don't have a material impact on the budget, but we've talked about. Yeah, the idea of the fees being to offset the service costs of what they provide. Where we are in the year, likely department heads haven't had time to look through all those yet. But I think it is a good idea for them to look through them each year and see if they feel like. Their fees are appropriate still.
I remember last year when we increased them, Darryl said it should be about a. Ran a forty thousand dollar revenue.
Oh, I'm saying, and I'm saying that the non-material ones, I meant the other than water and sewer. I'm sorry. Yeah, I meant the fees other than water and sewer. As non-material. So yes, I agree. I think water and sewer would be material and I think those. I don't disagree with this decision. I'm, there could be very real rationale, definitely like that one. But then also, I would like the department heads to look through all their fees, like they've done the last couple of years, you know, the whole spreadsheet of. Exactly like, and they've done like, you know, the fee to advertise for um. Changes to permitting and zoning, although it's kind of, you know. Or that they feel they're they're still good. I don't have any that I think need changing necessarily, but. It's a good thing just now they look through them once a year and. Feel like they're on target. Those, I'm saying, likely don't have a material change on the budget. But yes, I'm with you on the water and sewer.
That could be Benji's deal on the dog tags. Going to a lifetime instead of. Every year.
Well, that I pushed for that before too.
Like five different tags.
I said that before as well.
They're spending money.
I felt the same way. I, yes.
So the four hundred and seventy eight thousand five eighty. Is what? The county has put me in to keep the water and sewer float. Plus their fees. Correct?
The four seventy eight?
So that's the people, not all, but. A majority of the citizens who don't use that. Is paying it.
Well, even the ones that even even the ones that that are getting water and sewer are paying it too.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. Yes, yes, they have to because it's countywide. And there is no timeline that you can project when it would be self-sufficient, would it? That's just too many variables there.
In general, water sewers are not expected to only be paid for by those. So the benefits. It's not accurate to say that people who don't receive those are not receiving benefits because that's where the industry. Locates.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying and that's very true. But you can't tell that to Joe Blow who lives in Payneville. You know what I'm saying?
That's why I'm advocating for an increase in the fees. I I'm advocating for the re-increase of fees too.
Yeah, it's it it's a. It's a tough thing. When you see Chesterfield's got water and sewer lines all the way out to the county lines, then even woods out there. Steady adding them. But we're not Chesterfield, so.
And we possibly getting ready to get fifty hookers.
Hopefully.
Well, while we own revenue.
Yes, those would help, by the way.
Yeah, every little bit.
Absolutely, yeah.
Last year, there was some discussion on the um decal increases. Is that? Do we? I think Mr. Robson had an idea about. Additional charge from motorcycle license and car.
We discussed it last year.
And we kind of left it on the table. Maybe it's something we can look at that this year and plug some numbers in and see how much that helps us.
Yeah, I was gonna say there is a a fee schedule in here, but it doesn't give you a comparison, so it's not helpful. But yeah, we can look into that, absolutely.
Do you remember what your plan was last year? Not your plan.
I think we discussed it was like motorcycles went up to ten bucks and I think a car went up to thirty, I think. I think it was like five dollars. Because motorcycle was six or six fifty.
Can staff get us, get us a number on that too? So we're having. A number with an idea and see if it helps us.
Absolutely.
Can we go back to two fifty nine?
Yeah, absolutely.
Charges for service. It went from one forty eight thirty to forty five nine twenty. From twenty four to twenty five.
That could be a um error in the sheet as well because I don't. When I looked at their um.
I didn't see.
Let's see.
Yeah, just the ones you said loud, I didn't catch. I just heard you wrong.
Yeah, these numbers are actually pulled from um the schools spreadsheet. So it could very well be that mine is picking up a number that it shouldn't. Because I don't recall it going up. I believe most of the two five nine was pretty level as far as revenue and expenditures go.
So that's ninety five thousand dollar drop.
Yeah, that would go way down if that was. Well, just look at it, just look at it.
Oh, well, one noticeable drop here um is the, they have a line item for cafeteria retirement and. They may be able to speak more on what that is, but that went from ninety eight thousand to fourteen hundred dollars.
That was, that would be almost the entire decrease.
So. That probably accounts for why that there's such a drastic difference between. Any other questions on the sheet?
You got something to share?
They were looking. You see that we're on two, two fifty nine school cafeteria.
This is a revenue stream, not a cost.
Page five.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Alright. Um moving on to rest of section two is um some graphs information for you guys, kind of gives you a pie. Try a breakdown of what um makes up the revenue. Um there's two in here, one that includes. Uh fund transfers, one that is without fund transfers, so just informational of it. You can kind of see how that revenue kind of gets sliced up. As far as um the overall total of it goes. Section three gets into your expenditures and you start off with um departmental expenditure summaries, which is the general fund. Um and this lists out all of the different departments, what their major code is um and their. Requests. Now again, this budget is based off a level funding, so we did not increase anything unless we had to. So what any?
The reassessment. A hundred and forty three thousand sixty eight dollars, what is that?
That's a very rough number on if you guys were to decide to bring on a a real estate appraiser on staff.
That's.
Very rough number, but that's what I put in there. And that equates to a hundred and forty three thousand dollar increase in general fund expenditures. Any questions on the departmental expenditures? Like I said, they're pretty. Level across the board. We adjusted some areas based on what departments had presented and what we. Uh we're recommending, so. Okay, on the next page.
I'm sorry, so why does the reassessment show zero percent change then if it's gone? I mean, shouldn't that be?
Yeah, the the formula in that is picking up a zero and the, when you divide something by zero, you're not going to get a number. So that's why it's showing it, but it would be. These percentage increase.
Yeah, because we need to flag stuff like that though that are. Brand new expenses, yeah.
Yeah, I can um I can put a mechanism in place. Okay, on the um following sheet, page eight, we're gonna have non-departmental expenditures, which is our debt service, miscellaneous, non-departmental. Which we haven't had any last couple. Um there's your transfer to the sanitary district. Um you're gonna have the school systems that kind of shows you the their expenditure breakdowns by type. So you have. Operations, local funds and operations, non-local funds. Non-local funds is your Commonwealth and federal uh expenditures. Textbook cafeteria, um Department of Social Services, um they had an increase or they're projecting an increase. So we met or I put that in there. Um capital improvement plan and sanitary district fund.
How come the two fifty one, school operations, local funds? Where does that number come from?
Oh, yeah, that's wrong. That's definitely wrong. Yeah, that number should be about seven million dollars, which again is local. Money is not picking up the seven million dollars is what's going on.
What do you mean it's not picked it up?
The spreadsheet, it's just, there's an error in that formula, so it's not picking up the seven million dollars that y'all funded this year. But that local money, the local piece, that line item that you're talking about is the local county contribution and then local activity. So any kind of charges for services, um any kind of, uh if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Something like driving school fees, something like that is what's what's summed into that number.
There was some local money for the textbook fund too, correct? Last year? This year's budget?
Yes, um that would be under the two five four and it's gonna, again, it's gonna be lumped into that, that consolidated number. But that was about seventy five thousand dollars in FY twenty four, the current year.
Where's the seventy five thousand and twenty four?
It's it's gonna be lumped into this number right here. That two fifty four is summed into that. It's like a broad detail instead of like a. Fine detail, yeah. Okay, any other questions on that? And that pretty much sums up your expenditures as well. Again, there's a pie chart at the bottom, kind of shows you um a graphical there of how it's sliced up. Okay, moving on to section four. Um this gets into our local revenue projections, which is our real estate, our personal property, and then all other local. Um revenue generators. We're gonna start off with real estate. Um so you can see there, we included the ten percent increase in real estate rate, which goes from thirty eight to forty two cents a hundred. Um and. You can see the under um twenty twenty five, a little off to the right side of the page. We're projecting that revenue to be seven point seven nine four million dollars. Delinquent taxes, that's purely based on actual activities, so that's what our projected delinquent tax payments number is. Um which is one hundred ninety one thousand seven hundred seven dollar. And I also highlighted there in the green, as of two twenty nine, those are our actions at two twenty nine this year. That's what we've actually brought in for real estate.
So like I said, we hadn't even hit our projection from last year.
No, we got a little ways to go, but we expect that gap to close up by the end of the, end of the year. End of the fiscal year. Okay, the next page, that is your personal property breakdown. Um like I said, I I was very conservative with it this year because we are not hitting our mark where we would like. So I pulled that number back, reevaluated it, and it is projected at five point eight eight one million dollars. And again, um that number also includes the delinquent, which is directly below that. Based on activity, we're projecting that to be three hundred sixty one thousand two hundred thirty six dollars. Again, highlighted in the green, those are your actuals. Um and as you can see, we got a ways to go for the currents. We're getting pretty close with the delinquents, so. Okay.
We tax harder on this than almost anybody else.
Okay. Um next sheet, page eleven, that is all other local activity, all other revenue sources. Um you have actuals at the top, so those are your actuals with projected. Um the highlighted green column um in the middle of the page, those are your actuals as of two twenty nine. And you see from the graph, blue line is actuals, orange is projected. We usually come in below our action, which is good. So. We're doing pretty good as far as all all other revenue sources go.
I've been asked a couple, the local sales tax. I heard somewhere, do we get like one percent of the local sales tax? Was there, is there a? Is there a number that I can tell somebody when they ask me, says, yeah, we get?
You know, I honestly don't know how the Commonwealth determines that. I I'm sorry, I really don't know.
The bank franchise and fees, how come we have a zero? We're not gonna get any this year.
No, we should definitely have some bank franchises. Oh, I I have to get with Stephanie on that because. We should, we should definitely be getting that, yeah. I I have to check with Stephanie.
Well, but you may just not have, I mean, if it's actuals. We may just not have received them yet. It just be a timing issue. You still check whether it's.
It could very well be into your type thing, yeah. That that's good.
I think so. I agree, check with her, but. Definitely could be timing. It could definitely check, might need to check anyway, though. I mean, Wells Fargo leaving, you could see some differences. I don't know. I don't know how, I'm not sure exactly how that works.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions on that?
What's the recovered cost? I know we might have just went over that. You hit that again.
Recovered cost? Let's see, let me pull up our G O because they get, that's a consolidated number. Um the G O will give a detailed breakdown on it.
I mean, it looks like it's gonna be pretty close to what it was last year. I just didn't know what it was.
Yeah, um so there's two line items specifically under recovered costs. There's social services, retirement, life insurance. That's. Um I believe if I'm not mistaken, that is a payment that social cert would get for social services benefits. The second is a recovery cost in real estate. And I think that's something that Stephanie uses as far as. Um there's a specific activity for that, but I believe that's a treasurer activity.
And right above recovered costs is miscellaneous. And right above recovered costs is miscellaneous revenue. Twenty nineteen, we had eighty-eight thousand. And twenty twenty-four was seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand. That's a hundred thousand dollar interest next door to that.
No, no, no.
Interest rates have changed.
Yes, that is a EMS billing recognition. That's where we put our EMS billing, which is six hundred thousand dollars a billing cost. That that's purely revenue recovery.
Just says.
Yeah, that's a good guess, though.
Heck of a joke, Eric.
Probably should consider a separate code for that going forward. Going forward, considering that is so large and that it will happen more. With the changes we've made in structure. Might just get a little more visibility to that.
Yeah, we certainly do that.
This was really big back in twenty twenty-one. I mean, you don't need to go back to that one, too. Yeah, it fluctuates.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, with twenty twenty-two, who wrote?
Yeah, it dropped big time twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Moving on, there again, at the end of the section, there's some graphicals for you guys. Some, those are, I believe, Starburst. Percentage breakdowns, you kind of see what makes up your local revenue. Biggest piece of it is obviously real estate. Second piece, personal property, and all others make up twenty-eight percent. All right, section six, seven, and eight are personnel related. Those are your personnel cost breakdowns. So I can be happy to answer any questions on those.
Can you maybe just give an overview of major changes that you that you can think of?
So then, yeah, absolutely. In these, in the the level funded recommendations. No new positions rated. These are all established positions that are currently funded, that have been adjusted for cost of living. That's the biggest piece, no major changes outside of that.
So maybe I should have asked more, like trends on healthcare, healthcare costs, that kind of thing.
We actually dodged a major bullet with our healthcare costs. We had a zero percent increase in our premiums.
All right, perfect. That's exactly.
It was mirrored what it is in twenty-four.
All right, wonderful.
Okay.
I'm going to be the bearer of good news.
I try.
And you get the credit.
All right, well, if there's no other questions. On sections six through eight, we can move on to section nine. I do need to. Verify a few of these because I have not received some communication on some of them. I have on others. But this is a ballpark idea where our local and regional contributions are going to fall. We have gotten a couple requests in, the bulk of them. I do need to confirm some, but I did place a number in there so that way we can kind of see. But I do expect that number, the overall number at the bottom there to change slightly, so just FYI. But these are our local and regional contributions. These are organizations within the community that we fund that provide a service to the community.
Why do we only given half of what we've been to feed more?
So the allocation for feed more was split. Between feed more and Amelia County Food Pantry, which Amelia County Food Pantry in the past had not been funded.
Gotcha, gotcha.
She's giving it direct. I don't think the amount. Did you get a request from Crossroads directly or did you estimate that?
That's an estimation. I need to follow up.
I have the exact amount. I'll email it to you.
Okay, perfect.
That'll work. It's higher than that, but it, okay, if you, everybody remembers, their formula, it's directly based on percentage of usage. So it'll be less than the historical sixty-nine thousand, but more than last year.
Okay. Any other questions, Barbara, there?
We did the F S A again. The F S A was first time over here.
Okay. I did see one come through today for. The Virginia Retreat, Virginia Crossroads. I did see one come today for that. That's forty-five hundred dollars. So that's that's a level funding since. Or like in the past, so that one did come through, so I'll add that in there. But that is a forty-five hundred dollar request.
That one's already on. They were existing, though.
They were not on the existing note. I did not include it on the F Y twenty-five.
Levels, that threw me off. I'm sorry. That's fine.
They actually didn't request it last year, so that's one reason why I didn't include this year.
Oh, so consistent with past, but not from.
That's right.
That's fine.
This Southeast Rural Community Assistant Project, I I don't remember calling hearing anything about that. But of course, we're zeros all the way across.
Yeah, I don't think that's been funded for a while, so I probably just need to take that off of the list. But it did have a specific account, which is one reason why it's still on there.
What was it used to do?
At Cert Cap, Adam, I think they're out of Romanote. They do projects if money's available on. Residents of the.
I see.
Val and seventy upgrades.
Just some A B R.
Now, did we have a change on the Chesterfield on the mid-flight? Weren't they, they went up on it, right?
Yeah, I do expect that number to go up, but I I do not recall getting a letter from them yet. I do need to follow with them, but I I do expect that to go up. Because it has been historically going up. For the most part.
Yeah, that Willie Bird cost a lot of money to run.
Certainly does.
They came today. Boy, helicopter came today. I don't know if it's mid-flight, so a helicopter came today.
Those are short flight that. They just scooted right across the line.
They all cost the same.
Is this eleven thousand for Madeline's house? Is that, I mean, I know it's a different organization and. It won't be, you might want to consider a different code. I don't know how that works for you because like the Southside Center for Violence Prevention, Inc., I don't, that's not the association running it anymore then because it'd be part of. Steps, different organ, even if they use the same name, it's a different organization. You might want to do a different code, but that wasn't my point. It was going to be. Is that eleven thousand? Didn't their last letter say they were still estimating? Is this just what we think they're going to ask for?
Yes, I don't think.
Yeah, like a four or five page. Man, I think we should estimate because we think they will, but. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I have a more defined answer. I think you should do a different code because it will be a different, it will technically be a different organization. The tax ID and all that will end up being different payee.
Okay, yeah.
That's my theory.
We can certainly clean this up to be a little more accurate, yeah.
Well, that's an unusual situation. That is an unusual situation.
Right.
Where you get the same organization now running on different somebody.
Yeah, I believe it's within the same year that all that comes into place, so, yeah.
He did.
Yeah.
Steps, that was.
Yeah.
A major thing in the steps up there.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any other questions for local and regional orgs?
We did get a request today. From steps. You all remember, they were asking for fifty thousand dollars worth of ARPA money several years ago to build a tiny home village and things. They had commitments from Prince Edward, they had commitments from Nada Way, and he sent a message just today. Wanted to get the board supervisors to consider that again. Fifty thousand dollars worth of ARPA money, which our ARPA money is committed, but. I I think they they will, they would like to receive some money, whether it's ARPA or.
I know Prince Edward is a hundred and what, twenty-five thousand or something? Nada Way seventy-five. Then we're number three at fifty. From what I understand on our meetings.
But we never, this, the board of supervisors has never committed to pay that. It's been requested, but no decision's ever been made. Because the project was sort of lingering. They were going to buy one of the old Clayton Mobile Home Parks or something and. Build their facility there. I don't know that the picture ever got completely painted.
So I can get that put on the list. So right now, we know that number is going to be adjusted up fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars as far as requests go. So.
They're not counting the steps. Fifty thousand.
That does account. Yeah, that does include, so.
That includes the steps fifty thousand to fifty-four.
It does. Yeah, so if I were to include those two things, that three thirty-four would increase fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
We should have some discussion on that fifty thousand one.
Right here.
I was going to tell them they asked them for a little bit too much.
Well, that's where I was, so that's where, that's exactly where I was going, Dexter. I thought you were feeling the same on that, yeah. I just, I think it's a good, I think it's a good project. I just, I have a hard time feeling like Amelia's going to get. The residents are going to get that level of benefit from it.
So you just want to put a placeholder right down for that?
Basically what I say at every meeting. Are we getting our money's worth out of this?
I mean, it's going to be built in, for example.
Yes, and they got the biggest share, and Nada Way's number two, but Amelia's number three.
Josh, I'll just say it aloud. I'm not, I'm not hearing any initiative to to put any number in for that particular one. And anyone else disagree with me if they're hearing it wrong for you?
Sounds good. Okay, section ten, again. This is more of the F Y twenty-five high priority requests that were made. And I believe were recommended by the planning commission, if I am not mistaken. Brady is working on some numbers for me. He's going to get it more conclusive. I figure what we are currently funding, what has been completed and no longer encumbered. And combine that with the new request. And once I get that, I will update this section and send to you guys. But what we did is we included the high priority new items on this sheet here on section ten. Which is page twenty. So these are the all the high priority items that are being requested for the C I P. Fund.
I think once we get that updated information. You know, projects, amounts.
We can, we can deal with that in the next workshop. All right.
I I do feel for what we talked about in closed session and other about land, not particularly this project. The board is. Pretty passionate or pretty to move forward with the animal shelter.
Well, we got to get state off our backs.
Yeah, we have, we're having issues there, so is that still? We still in agreements that? That we need to build an animal shelter?
Yeah, I think we need to do some fundraising, too. Look at Nada Way's raised. They raised over five hundred thousand dollars themselves.
I'm sure you can get in the dunking room anytime you want.
Hey, that's good. You go call?
Yep. Not in it.
You can't swim?
I can't swim.
Well, my. Don't worry, it's standing right back.
My wife is.
He's a little so good.
Got about five hundred, close to five hundred dollars this past two weeks donating, but they're paying a bill off at the vet for the animal shelter. Because they don't run up, you know, that saves Amelia from having to pay it and she on Facebook asking for donations constantly to help the animal shelter.
Was five hundred grand?
Yeah.
Through fundraising right now for their shelter.
And it's something we need to look at. Need to look at that.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we get. Probably next workshop, we'll dive in. We'll have all that information on the C I P. We can dive in that a little bit further.
Yeah, by that time, we should have some pretty concrete across the board areas, not just the C I P, but more concrete figures. This just gives you guys a really rough idea where you're going to fall.
It's a really good, it's a really good start.
Yeah. So we'll skip on pass, and that pretty much concludes it. The last two sections in here are appendix A, which is. The advertised piece of the budget. This is kind of the graphic that the public sees. So that's appendix A. Appendix B is the fee schedule, so that's all the county's fees in one place.
Thank you. Those are the ones I was talking about that I think the department heads just can take a look at, just make sure they. Still feel good about all of them.
Absolutely. And that gentleman concludes the first template that we have for you guys. The second is exactly the same, except we recommended a three point five percent COLA, which. Reflects the twenty twenty-three Consumer Price Index increase. So the Consumer Price Index increase was three point four nine, if I'm not mistaken, so we recommend three point five. That I believe is our recommended budget. And I will be happy to answer your questions, but again, it's exactly the same, except personnel costs are slightly higher because of the increased COLA.
Why is the general? Fund revenues higher on this one than it is on the other?
He's looking, while he's, while he's looking, guys, what did the schools land as a recommended cost of living increase?
They're talking to each other.
Doctor Harper, what did the schools land on at the recommended cost of living increase?
We, we're still between, we're kind of waiting on the state to make a constitution of their budget, but the House and Senate have three percent. Increase in one and three and three eighths in the other. So we present three percent and three and a half as far as you guys have a terrific guidance.
I'm laughing at the three eight. I'm not laughing at you, it's the three eighths.
All right. Same work.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. So very, very in line, very in line with what we.
The revenue increase because we would have an associated Commonwealth increase, like Mr. Trump was saying, with depending on where they fall, where they go this way or that way. Three, we're expecting a three point five percent COLA with the Commonwealth in this one. So that would be, right, exactly. So that would be where that that change of revenue has come into play there. There'll be an additional Commonwealth revenues to match it.
But. Even if we only went with a one percent? Wouldn't.
Well, right now, the the last I looked, there was a couple of amendments. One. Looked like the comp board had recommended one percent, so that's where that one came into play.
Okay, then that makes sense. Thank you. I got them. Yep, perfect.
We think it's going to be more like three point five.
Okay, I'm good now. Yeah, you saw where I was going.
Yeah.
And we're still playing? Well, it ends up the same. We're thinking we're going to stick with. We've had some times in the past where our recommended percent, our percentage, not recommend, our percentage and the state's percentages didn't equal the same, and we balanced them out across and across employees. This wouldn't really, like the sheriff's office was always the big, the big one. They they did the balancing out. I guess we're really not, right now, both, you're thinking it's going to land that's the same as the states, that wouldn't really be a problem.
I would think, yeah, I would think that we would be.
That's always better when it's not a problem, actually. Okay, never mind.
So any questions on that? Like I said, it's exact mirror except it's three point five versus one.
Who's on? No, I just answered it.
Okay.
So. With a. Ten percent tax increase. Personal profit going back to the. Four fifteen original. We're at about an eight hundred thousand deficit.
Yeah, that's correct.
And that's at pretty much level fund, level funded busting three and a half.
As far as expenditures go, yeah.
The dirty. Go ahead, finish your thought. I'd like to see some of the breakdowns on some of these departments. Because I got a couple of questions on some of them.
Sure, if you let me know which ones, I can, I can send you their requests. Because what they do is they fill out a line by line, so I can just send you that. Actually, just let me know which ones you want.
That kind of goes on what I was thinking. You looked at them. Is there any request? That maybe the proper money would fall into?
Well, I do know that, and we we can shift over to the the last template if you want, and I can kind of get into that and answer that question. So if we were to look at the department requests. As far as their requests go. I know that the sheriff is asking for the last two of those four positions that he asked for in twenty twenty four. So we funded two, we did not fund the last two. He asked for four total. He's asked for those again this year. If we were to do that, then the associated. Equipment, the vehicles, the outfitting would be the exact same as the last two. And that way we could use proper money. To pay for the cars, to pay for the um equipment and things like that. But that.
That, that, that figures in the, not the level funded budget. That's in the budget that we're a little over three million dollars deficit.
Right. Are you referring to the level funded anywhere we can reduce?
Well, either one, really, right?
Yeah, I mean, we can reduce neither one. The level funding it was recommended just because of how everything was kind of. Falling in far as expenditures go. The department heads, I think, would be a little bit more in tuned on letting you know what they could cut and what they couldn't. I don't know that. Um, I could just tell you, putting in exactly what they asked for in FY twenty four gets you to that number.
That's a bad number.
I tried. I tried to get you guys there, but.
I don't know if everybody's. Looking at the number, but that's a bad number. Well.
But I also don't wanna overreact to it, cause it is just their, it's just their class. I mean, so are we not planning to have them come in and talk to us like they did before, have done previously? I think there is a lot of value. I mean, same ways. Todd's talking about some questions. I think you must have some questions too. Like, it's hard to know what. What the value is they get from some of these increases too, and. What flexibility they have.
I think the feedback that the staff has gotten is that. Departments would like to come forward if they disagree with. What has been presented. But by and large, I think you're gonna find the majority of the departments will work with what they're given. And they would rather do things other than come to board meetings and talk about. Their budget requirements, budget needs.
Wouldn't we all, but. I mean, that's the public nature of spending the public's money.
Is this budget got D O? EMS or what we're talking about down the road? Is included in this and all?
Some of the biggest increases too.
Thirty two four hundred.
Okay.
I mean, I, maybe that's the. I mean, maybe that would be a good starting place, Josh, is to, for that. Department request version, so number three, the third one.
Yeah.
Maybe is to look at where are those largest changes? I don't know, Dave, I'm trying to get where. I think I have the same reaction. You're right, but just like I have same reaction you do, but it's like, where do you start with it? So if we kinda. Could get then, I mean, we can get it frankly, we looked through, but sometimes the numbers are, are large because of some back behind the scenes stuff. Funding transfers, things like that and wash out, but like. Where are the biggest drivers in that? Change that equate to that large deficit. Again, take out the things that are anomalies. That are stuff going on behind the scenes that you know that, you know, and then say, here's your top. Five, ten list. And I think that's the place for us to start looking is. I mean, cause you know, we can go through and you can cut it into five thousand and ten thousand dollars here and there. Well, that's not gonna make a meaningful difference. For a long, long time, but look at the really, really big stuff and see. First. Because that's where we're gonna either have to feel really good about. Here's an, here's an increase of three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, whatever it is. We, we wanna do that and there's good reason behind it or not.
Well, let us know what the increase encompass. Why did you ask for three hundred thousand more dollars?
Yes.
Show me what happened to make you ask for this? And hey, maybe you can get half this year and half next year and still cover it.
Exactly.
Do it all at once.
Exactly.
Maybe. I mean, I don't, you know.
I agree with you, Dexter. That's the same. I think that's the conversation we've then gotta be able to have. That and are there grants out there? Are there, you know, what, just all those scenarios?
Yeah, that's kinda where I was going. I mean, we're already at a four cent tax increase. We gotta find, we gotta find a solution somewhere, cause I don't know exactly how much more we can handle that.
Yeah.
And we've already been accused of having the highest personal property rate. But when you put these numbers. Where's it come from? I mean.
Well, we've already heard it. It's. The length with taxes, you know, cause it could be economics, economy, people, you know, all struggling. I mean, you know, I'm not saying everybody is, but there is some people that are and. Why they pay the tax?
I was under the impression from the last couple of years when we did the personal property reduction. Wasn't, it was a reduction, but it was a reduction. I can't think of the word.
Yeah.
That when it went back to where it was, it would be. A substantial increase, which, but I don't think it turned out that way, cause.
Well, because the values are coming back there. So it's no, I mean, that, I. That's why we did it as a temporary thing, is we felt like the values were up. As an, as an anomaly. And so what you're seeing is it. Is the ideal scenario, honestly, for people is that was an anomaly. So we do the temporary cuts. Now you're seeing the rate, the values come back down to normal. Which for us from a revenue standpoint is not good, but for, from the people's standpoint, it meant we made the right decisions during those times. And, and you're getting it there. Yeah. And Josh, I think to Dexter's point on the. Well, yeah, I agree with you. On the, oh Dexter's point on the delinquencies, which I think we need to have Stephanie talk about. And let's make sure we're not over or underreacting. We talked, we agreed on that both. But I think you said, and I don't disagree with you on this, that you were conservative then on your revenue projections. I generally agree with being conservative on them. But let's make sure we're also not too conservative on them as well. And I don't have a, I don't have a difference of opinion on you on that. But maybe as you go back and talk to. Between now and the next meetings, and I know you've got a real full time job now, I am aware of this. So, so I say you, it's not just you, it's whoever else is running, you know, but. Talk, talking to Stephanie and Laura, their staffs and, and the finance department. Making sure everyone doesn't feel we've, we've gone to be too conservative in those projections as well. I don't, I certainly don't want us to be over. Optimistic, because that doesn't help any of us, but if we pull back too much. To what's now, you know, we overreact and make it too conservative, then that can lead to some bad downside too. Again, I don't have enough information to have an opinion. Just, it gives you an opportunity, it gives you, it gives you an opportunity to do, go back and do a triple check on it. Um, because it isn't, at the end of the day, it's a guess. We real, we realize that, right? And um. But I'd say just, you know, pull back one more time with them and say, what do they think? You know, it might even be, and again, I wouldn't say you, cause you've got the other full time job now, but maybe somebody, you know, I can't remember his name, I'd say it. Um, the temporary.
Mr. Montero.
Mr. Montero.
Maybe he, you know, maybe like his call to a couple of other finance directors in neighboring counties, you know, what are they? Estimating with some of these percentages and things. Doesn't mean we have to change it to theirs, but you know, you just get a feel for. Are we right in line? Are we high, low? Because again, it is an estimate. But. Just. I'll leave it at that.
Absolutely.
Even if, even if we find we're under by five hundred thousand, that helps close the, those. Right? I'm making up. I'm making up that number. I mean, but if you had, if you were a little under in the projection on that, if you could make some better use of the cash profers. Some, some use of the decal fee. Fund. Also then we take a look at some of these high change. Um, requests that we talked about. It's not insurmountable. It's a, it's a start, as you said, it's a starting place for today anyway.
I reckon Stephanie should have a trend chart, a trend chart in there for the last, say, five years. To see how it's. And maybe this is just run parallel to say two years ago or three years.
Every month, yeah. You can see what's.
Yeah, I know that too, but we pay her to do it, so come in here, talk to me. Because I might, just like y'all said, interpret it one way and it's another way.
And I agree.
What were you saying, Mr. Robinson, when they go?
Uh, we discussed earlier about. Amity. Fifty cent. I think it's number ninety five thousand. Ninety six.
That rate hasn't changed in a long time, I think. I don't think business, I don't think the overall business um license. Has changed in a long time either. I'm not saying it should, I just think, look, I, I was going with just the theme, what has not changed in a long time, look at it for consideration.
See, I thought about that too, but this year I checked, cause. You know, you've gotta have business license in any county now that you do over twenty five grand, blah, blah, blah. It's all about tax money. But like a lot of your other counties give you. Your first two fifty for free, ten dollar fee. Maybe it don't give you nothing.
Oh, I, oh, I.
So I mean, it would, it, it might, I don't know. That's the only thing about that. But yeah, we need to look at some stuff.
Well, and that's why I said, I'm not saying necessarily increase it. I'm just going for the, look at the things that haven't changed in a while. You may decide to leave some of them or all of them. But don't, don't not look out.
We don't, we, we don't wanna discourage business either. We, we wanna be fair, but we don't, we don't wanna gouge them, but as I said, we need to be.
Well, can't pick on nobody.
Can't pick on nobody.
He's been getting hits all along, but this one ain't been getting them.
That, that's exact, that's exactly how I feel about it, Dexter. If you just keep going the same people all the time. You can't, and I agree on fairness. We don't see, I mean, all right, again, I'm not advocating for a business license tax increase, and to be clear, but I'm just using this as a scenario. If, if we stakes, if we're, if we're decide we're lower than others, but we're not seeing big business increase either. Then you're not necessarily getting the benefit from that low tax either, you know. So you gotta just look at, look at the whole way things play out around.
Uh, yep.
Well, since we're talking about things that hadn't been changed in a long time, how about your land use rate? It's been five twenty for hello?
It's not something you set.
That's right. Another office does. Right?
Yes, sir.
Well, if I can offer a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel.
Would you please?
There will be a substantial amount of debt service coming off the county's books in, I believe, calendar year twenty six. That's about four hundred thousand dollars of debt service that gone. So that is something that will be in the next couple of budgets, a factor to kind of reduce some of this expenditure that you're seeing. Cause that, that's a pretty big number that we're paying every year for debt service.
But that doesn't go down each year. It's gonna drop off them.
The principal payment does.
Okay.
The principal payment goes down slightly, but it's not anything to really impact anything. Now, three hundred thousand dollar principal payment gone, yeah, that will be pretty impactful, yeah.
Right. Okay.
So, just an FYI.
Well, I think that's good, but I actually don't see this. I mean, again, these, you're looking just at the very first review. If it came in and we were gonna be flush with money, it would be shocking. I mean, whose budget doesn't come in where there, where people, whether it's your personal or any company where you want more than what revenue is. That's the reason you plan to have these discussions. Is a reasonable place to be on the first discussion, I think. And we've got, again, multiple levers to look at, funds that have rev, that have revenue. I mean, you've got even some sitting here. Again, you gotta find specific places to you, to use them, but they're, they're there. We've got options that have been multiple that have been brought up. Some possible place that might even have some errors in the fork, in the Excel spreadsheet and things like that. I don't think they'll be major. But I mean, again, things to look at. It's a good place for day one.
Absolutely. Well, I'd be happy to answer any other questions y'all got. Touch anything that y'all want me to touch on?
I think you gave, I think you've done excellent.
I appreciate it.
Three options. Or three, three options and three point of view. We know where we gotta go. I think we're at the top side of what we can reach out and bring back into, bring into the county. We just gotta decide, like Mr. Ethan saying about the. The profers, the decals, and I know, I know we say this every year. Can we just make sure that's the only two that's out there? If it's any more out there that, that may get overlooked or something?
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
And just.
Let's see, you know, using that for the radio tower.
Thought he now went, went straight, kinda went to the sheriff's office.
I thought he funded part of the um dispatch.
Something loans is going somewhere instead of sitting there.
We just, just check that list. I mean, I don't expect that list to grow to fill a page yet, but we might, we might find another. Balance out there somewhere that we, that we overlooked and. All right, what are the? You might gotta, we don't, you don't talk about anything else? Good.
We'll have a audit done.
I was expecting to find a report last week. I'll touch basically.
Anything come up with concerns?
No. No.
We're not expecting a management letter or anything. Is that correct?
That's right.
I assume not. I'd just like you to be able to say it out loud, celebrate it.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Does the uh radio system that we've been talking about, the new one we're putting in? Have these numbers reflect on the problem we're having in Cook Road?
No. No, cause that, that problem is just in the communication stage right now. I don't.
Okay.
I don't think that problem is, has either went one way to other. And just to bring everybody up to date. Probably seen in, in the updates. Everybody know what happened? We're gonna use a tower on Cook Road in Powhatan to put some equipment. Powhatan wants to lease it to us for like thirty six thousand dollars a, a year.
Playing a coin right up next to it.
There's, there's some other things in the works. I think staff is having some conversations with the two counties. And of course, emergency communications is getting alternative plans. Just from my point of view. We were kinda. Worried about this, and that's why we chose not to go in on their radio system. So, I think it's something that's gonna get worked out. But I, it, it hasn't reflected in any of the figures.
Doesn't the system, they can use ours, we use theirs with Powhatan, then Woody.
Yeah.
It's getting like a blanket system for this area.
Kinda, it's like me using your phone. I could use your phone, but.
You ask nicely.
Ken's right about that. Ken can explain the whole thing, but that's kinda hitting the.
You know, my question was, was that included? We gotta come up with some.
It's gotta be a decision made. Once we get.
One that was made.
What we gotta make a decision though. I don't think we got to that point. What, um? I think this is very productive. I think we got stuff to do. What are y'all's options for the next meeting, next workshop?
It's timeline, what's the timeline you're gonna?
Well, we gotta have something by April, board meeting. And.
Well, you would do a. CIP one two prior to the board meeting or not?
I think, I, I would think our next workshop, we can hit. Few of these, figure out what path we're going on. I think we'll have some information on the CIP amounts and, and what's been allocated already. I think that's gonna tie up the next workshop. And then I would like to have one. Probably the first of April to kinda put all the pieces together. Cause it's gotta be advertised. Later part of March, we oughta, we need to know what we're doing. So, I think the next one would be as. So, I think the next one will be as productive as this one. I'd like to do it next week. But. Again, this is me.
Tell me a date and time.
Fourteenth at twelve.
Don't we have a Jeff Gore for your meeting next week?
On the fourteenth, can we do it same day?
Fourteenth, that's right.
Yeah. Can we do it the same day?
That's too short a notice for me. I'm already out of town for work, second half week. I could do it Monday. Next week.
Be the eleventh? What time?
Two Friday. Oh, no, not Friday.
Monday at two?
Three.
Didn't have to be on me, I was just offering off the potential.
Three, that gives him two hours. I mean, we could, I can do that, whatever, whatever you want to do.
Let's do it. About Monday at four.
Very flexible to follow.
Now, then you see if you, you're getting into after hours. That's what I'm trying to avoid, is after hours.
Three? Three.
One to three, next Monday?
Going twice.
Dexter, he don't care.
It's a continued meeting. Is that cool with everybody?
Next Monday.
Very much.
Hey.
Three o'clock. At two forty eight, it seems start, no, three o'clock.
Three o'clock, okay.
Couple hours, I, I think that'd be beneficial.
Eleven.
The eleventh.
Then Benji takes us all out to steak dinner afterward. Couple other things to think about.
Three eleven, twenty four, two o'clock.
Three o'clock, three.
Yeah. Let's remember that the March meeting is on the twentieth. If we're gonna advertise a public hearing for the Board of Supervisors meeting in April, we need to have two full weeks of advertising. That would be March the twenty eighth. And April the fourth to advertise. Because unfortunately, if you're gonna meet the spirit of the law, and it, and it, and you've got to meet that, especially on budgets, has to be a full week. A newspaper that comes out on Thursday morning does not make it okay to meet on Wednesday night the following week. So we're, we're pushed up into April, I'm sorry, March on the twenty eighth. Which is the Thursday, two Thursdays after the board meeting. We'll have eight days after the March board meeting. To have an advertised budget ready to go.
Oh, so that affect next week?
Pardon me?
That affects next week?
Does not affect next week.
Okay, so we have seven weeks now, okay.
You give us a goal.
He gives us a goal, we are.
I got you.
We've got to have something to advertise on March the twenty eighth.
So if we met on March twenty eighth. That would finalize it up, I'm hearing that right?
We, we've got to have something advertised on March twenty eighth.
Yeah, you gotta do it.
So that'll have to be in the newspaper on the twenty fifth.
All right. Well.
And we'll get there.
We'll get there. I think we, we'll see how much progress we had last, next week. We had, we had right most today. Got some answers, and we'll do a little massage and and see where we can get. Send that out to everybody so that you don't everybody's counting.
And we're going. Going to get the different departments to let us see what the breakdown is and what.
You're asking what you want.
The biggest, the biggest jump. While, you know, they had the biggest increase on a certain item, just to let us know, you know, like we said, that's something we make a little bit of split the difference.
Yeah, I can tell you that most of the departments that are asking for significant increases have provided narratives in a written form, and I'd be happy to send that to you.
Okay. He might want one or two wheel wheelbarrows, and one might just be all he get.
But you'll have that by a week next one. You'll have us some good answered questions.
It may be close like it was this, this, because I could, you know, kind of do it on the weekends, but.
I'm saying.
Yeah.
We're thankful and blessed that you, you're getting us this far.
Absolutely.
All right, gentlemen, we will.
Make a, well, make, make a motion for it.
Sure.
Do you want one?
Yeah, make a motion so we can.
Yeah.
We can, there we go.
So I'll make a motion to continue today's meeting until Monday, March eleventh at three P M in the same location.
Thank you, Mrs. Motion on the floor to. On another workshop. March eleventh at three, right here. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carried, that's where we'll be. You got a lot of questions.